All right. Could I ask the clerk to please call our board?
Commissioner Barnett. Commissioner Baxter.
Here.
Commissioner Bernard.
Here.
Commissioner Marino.
Here.
Vice Mayor Sax.
Here.
Mayor Weiss.
Here.
Commissioner Woodward.
Here.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to call upon Vice Mayor Sax to please lead us in our invocation and pledge of allegiance. All who are able to, please rise.
A prayer for soldiers. Gracious God, I pray for our soldiers. Let your grace be a protective shield, guarding them from harm and keeping them close to your love and compassion. May I always remember that they are the ones who face the horrors and dangers of war firsthand. Help us honor them for their courage and care for them when there is damage to their bodies or spirit. When they're lonely and afraid and long to be with the sure knowledge of your presence at all times, in war and peace, let them feel, oh God, deep in their hearts, that your love is always there, boundlessly, unconditionally, and eternally. God bless our soldiers and keep them safe. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right. Thank you very much, Vice Mayor. All right. Are there any additions, deletions, or substitutions?
Mayor, there are no additions, deletions, or substitutions.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
No motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Marino and a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously. All right. So just as we're getting started this morning, we have scheduled a new group photograph prior to lunch. So I will, if need be, I expect this to hopefully be a relatively quick meeting, but if need be, we will break at 11:30 for lunch where we can have the photograph taken, and then we'll reconvene at 1:30 if necessary. So, all right. Okay. Consent agenda, and I believe we have a card. Does anyone wish to pull any items off consent agenda? I don't see.
At this time, we have one speaking card for the consent agenda, and that would be Lynda Harvey.
Good morning, Mayor Weiss and Commissioners. My name is Lyndee Harvey. I am the Director of Spirit of Giving, and I would just like to thank you for your support for the Back to School PBC. With this support, we are able to provide over 10,000 under-resourced children in our county with the tools they need to succeed for the new school year. It is my honor to partner with you in planning and executing this program, and I am grateful to be able to work with the Office of Community Revitalization, Houston Taint, Ruth Bogalinski, and their staff, as well as Palm Beach County Sheriff's Department and the Children's Service Council, as we help so many children in need. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. With that, do we have a motion? I have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by Vice Mayor Sax. Any other discussion? All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously, seven to zero. All right, moving on. So we're moving to public hearings. And so I, let's see, do we have, I need a motion to receive and file proof of publication. Have a motion by Commissioner Marino, a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor? All opposed? That motion carries unanimously. Okay. So moving on, we are now on to item 4A1. And does anybody need a presentation on this?
I don't.
Anyone require? Nope, not seeing anybody. Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion? Okay. Okay. So we have a motion on item 4A1, A, B, C, and D, by the Vice Mayor and seconded by Commissioner Woodward. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor? All opposed? Thank you very much for joining us up there.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, for your support.
Okay. Next, Water Utilities. And this is a, what's in front of us today? This is 4B1, and this is, would be a postponement. And you want to, I know we have some cards here, so I'm going to ask Mr. Bonlaren if you want to just give us a brief public statement about this, and then we'll take the folks who want to comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Vice Mayor. Commissioners, Administrator Baker, County Attorney. Before you, is it a postponement on a public hearing? And first, I want to just introduce our team from Water Utilities here with us. Mike Jones is with us from the County Attorney's Office. Kristin Bernson, who is our Deputy Director of Water Utilities. Ralph Estine, who's the Project Manager on this particular item, is with us as well. So you may recall, last year, we had a very similar item that came before the Board of County Commissioners. And actually, very similar type vote that you see here as well. And one of the directives that the Board gave back with that, we had a couple of folks from the public that came in, some who were not in favor of it, some who had, were in no response, and indicated that they hadn't potentially received the mailouts that came from Water Utilities for the vote that was initially cast on the other item. And so what the Board determined was that moving forward on some of these water utility items, that they wanted certified mail to be used as the means for the vote and then for further notifications. This was one of those items that sort of got caught in between in the middle of that directive. It had been engaged, moved forward, voted on, and then subsequently, as it was moving along, it came to us and said, you know what? We didn't do this vote by certified mail in the actual vote. So with the help of the County Attorney's Office and Water Utilities, we did a couple of things. One, we worked to get a letter that we've drafted to send back to these 12 residents or these 12 households by certified mail, to make sure that everybody is notified by certified mail on this. And secondly, one of the most important things about this was the cost of this particular project. And we had a contractor that we'd been working with who has a contract with the county that was soon to expire. And through our work with Water Utilities, they agreed to honor that same price, even if we postponed this outside of the expiration date of that contract to do that work, if the Board did in fact move forward and approve moving this item forward. So on a procedural issue, what we're looking at is basically, we are going to go back out to do the certified mail on the vote, to reaffirm the vote count that we have, and then to bring this back at a later date for public hearing that we will advertise, and hopefully, we can get it done very quickly, because I know that there are a number of residents who are very interested in wanting this done and have reached out to us. So Mayor, that is a brief explanation of the item and why we're asking for the postponement today.
All right. Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Not seeing any. Okay. So with that, we'll go ahead and we'll start, we have a few comment cards here, but if you can limit your comments, this is in regarding to the postponement. So that's what's in front of us this morning. So Commissioner Marino.
Thank you. We have seven speaking cards and one non-speaking card. We're going to use both lecterns. Jackie Watts to one, Charles Watts to the other, followed by Lisa Johnson and Kenneth Either one.
I'll go first. I'll take the hit on this one. That's my wife, by the way. Hi, I'm Charlie Watts. We actually didn't know why we were coming here today. We did know that it had something to do with a postponement, but we weren't sure as to what we were supposed to speak about. By the way, I'm terrible at public speaking, so I'm sorry. But we are for, or I am for, the postponement of this. I mean, I think our main problem on this was just the amount of money that was going to be spent on this project. I don't know if you're familiar, but for the 12 houses, it's going to cost, for hookup and everything, it's going to cost over $31,000 per household to get just public water alone. For us, in this past, well, since 2021, our monthly expenses have gone up over $900 just for our family alone per month. And adding another $250 to that is going to be a considerable burden for us. But I guess that's not why we're here. We're here to see if we can postpone this. So I'm for the postponement. Thank you.
Hi, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Jackie Watts. I live at 8892 180th Avenue North. And, you know, piggybacking on what my husband said, I'm here today first to ask that, yes, I agree with the postponement and pleased to have a revote, but if I also may say that maybe next time, just keep in mind that I would ask that you also consider voting against the 89th Place North Water Main Extension. Because our initial vote was in 2021, the project was delayed, like everybody said, and it turned out to be a lot more money than most other assessments that I've seen. And now it's 2023, and as my husband said, our monthly costs have gone up. And it's true, you know, we're young, and we can work our tails off and get this done. But he's already working overtime to cover our current monthly costs, and I'm at home with our four little boys. So honestly, it's hard, and I know it's hard for everybody right now. But we would like to see my husband every once in a while, and it's just very stressful on our family. So please consider maybe tabling the whole project at some point. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kenneth Salzman, followed by Amerco Nunez?
Lisa Johnson.
Oh, I'm sorry. Lisa Johnson, correct. I got too many cards. You want to go first?
Hi, my name is Lisa Johnson, 1785689th Place North. I'm for the project. My husband did submit a card online this morning as well. I didn't hear that one mentioned. Thank you to Mayors and Commissioners for letting us speak today. As this meeting is postponed, our price is locked in, is limited. None of us like the $26,000 that we have to pay to get piped to our house, but I don't like the $40,000 even more that Ralph said he is, when he ran the new contract, that was what his numbers came up to. As per the current feasibility study submitted September 2, 2022, which was updated with the census data, most on water wells include over 42 square miles of continuous land, 1,284 families, 42,987 residents, and 15,724 housing units. And I just want to speak briefly about the sustainability and viability factor of this and why I am for this project. The acreage is a dedicated watershed that is being desecrated. Unregulated buildup of properties, unregulated fill for buildup of very much contaminated soil that you can see by sight. Saltwater intrusion, unregulated installation of whole house RO, unregulated by the FDA with significant unusable wasted water with concentrated chemicals and salt being released back into our water table. Also, just speaking to someone today, I mentioned about whole table ROs. They don't even realize they're removing everything, the minerals that are essential for life in our bodies that they're drinking. So there's no education out there for this. It's like drinking distilled water. So what is the plan for, well, if the well water for 42,987 people become unsustainable and viable? I have asked this of Ralph Estine, I have asked this from Betty Argu, and I'll ask you guys. There is no plan. How are we going to get waters to these homes? Are we going to truck it in? I don't want, I want to know that I'm always going to be having water, safe drinking water, and water that is tested regularly, which I can't do on my well. I can count on Palm Beach County Water Utilities with their intricate systems to do that regularly and keep us safe. So again, I hope that we can, you know, not delay this project to the point that we have to pay more, but if that's the case, then we'll have to see what happens with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Hi, good morning. I'm Kenneth Salzman. I live at 1785589th Place North. I don't think there's any contention that the quality of water is imperative. It's not only the quality of water, but it's having the proper amount of water available to use. These wells and RO systems are on some of the wells, take a lot of water out of the aquifer. There's more and more new housing being put in, punching new wells into the aquifer, drawing down the ability to produce enough water to sustain these households. So the idea of having municipal water, the county water, is a really good idea. I think what shocked everyone was the extreme cost associated with having this done.
Can I ask you, are you for or against the postponement?
I am against the postponement. I am for going forward on this project. I think the biggest issue is the cost and why the county is not bearing some of the cost to enhance the quality of life within the county's jurisdiction. And as a homeowner, as a property owner, as a taxpayer, my concern is that maybe there should be some way for the county to help us pay for some of this cost. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Amerco Nunez and Robert Johnson, followed by Joshua Harris. And you are, sir? Amerco?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Good morning, everybody. My name's Robert Johnson, 1789389th Place North, Loxahatchee. I didn't know we were going to be voting on whether to postpone or not, because I'm here dead set against it. I would rather the whole thing be scrapped, but I was the first house to break ground out on our street and moved out there. And I put an RO system on our house. We have really good water. And I didn't ask anybody else to pay for that. I did it. But if this is just a vote to postpone or not, I vote yes to postpone, with the hope that we can stop it altogether. Thank you.
And Joshua Harrison?
Good morning.
Morning.
Joshua Harrison, 1789489th Place North. And same as everyone else, I didn't realize it was just a meeting to postpone or not. So I am for the postponement. As with most, I'm also kind of dead set against it. I moved out there about two years ago. My house has an RO system on it. I love it. I maintain it every month, I test my water regularly. There's no problems at all. Besides that, $27,000 is just, I mean, I'm a 35-year-old man with three kids, and my wife doesn't work, and I don't know what $27,000 would do or how in the world I'm ever supposed to figure out how to pay that, let alone monthly with 5.5 interest a month. It's like $40,000 over 20 years. I mean, I budgeted meticulously to buy this house and have a better house for my family, saved up for a very long time. And it's working out, but yeah, $27,000 is something I really didn't see coming. And yeah, so for that reason, I'm dead set against it and for a postponement in the hopes that hopefully we can find some other common ground, or if there's any way for people who actually wanted to pay for it, to each their own. Doesn't bother me at all, but it definitely puts a big hurt on everybody that doesn't want it and can't afford it. I know at least three or four of us that might have to move. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. What else?
Well, actually, we have-
Oh, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized, sorry.
Can I have a word?
This is for staff. I kind of wanted to know, do we have, because we've heard several numbers now, the cost per household?
Amerco Nunez, 1793189th Place North.
Hold on one second, sir. Hold on one second. We have a question of staff. This might help.
I'm making a point.
Commissioner, the assessment per parcel is $26,940, and then as well, on top of that is the hookup fee, which is about $4,500 for the hookup fee on top of that.
And as mentioned, it'll go up because we are currently locked into the 2019-
Correct. So yes, that $26,000 will stay. Again, we did agree the price with the contractor for that, so.
But only if it goes through now. Or not now, but they're going to, if we choose to postpone and send out, you know-
The new letters, yes.
New letters, and then it comes back to us. If we voted no, the price, if ever wanting to be done in a future date, would be $40,000?
Or whatever the going rate is of the contract at that time.
Whatever the going rate is then. Is that what I'm understanding? So what are, what's the current percentage pro and against this?
So currently, of the 12 residential units on that street, seven have voted in favor in the initial vote. Three were not in favor, and two were no responses. And so we're going to go back out to those again through certified mail to re-verify that vote amongst those 12 property owners. And that's what we're going to bring back at a later date when we open this up for the future hearing, per the postponement.
And has there been a cost breakdown on the monthly burden to the residents?
In terms of, if, there's two options. One, they can pay for it straight out, and second, they can choose to have it assessed on a month-to-month. And Ralph, you might want to share some of those, if you've got the month-to-month on
Good morning, Commissioner. So for the, actually breaking down on a yearly basis, which is about $2,200, which is roughly $160 a month?
That includes interest and everything?
Correct.
Okay. And so it's cost-wise, that's what we would be adding to them monthly, should they choose to finance it over a period of time? And do we currently have any grant dollars going towards this?
No grant as of yet.
So this is 100% currently resident-funded?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We, Amerco, you wanted to speak?
Yes, I would like to. 1793189th Place North. And I would like to go for, we got city war.
You would like to vote for, so you are voting in, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Go ahead.
You are voting in favor of the postponement-
In favor. In favor.
So that we can do this properly?
In favor of do the project.
Okay. I have, so that was our, thank you. That was our last speaking card. I do have two non-speaking cards. Audrey Henry, you did not say whether you were in support or opposed to the postponement?
I oppose.
Okay. And then Connie Gibson, your comment, mailman put certified letter in neighbor's mailbox without getting it signed for. So just-
Yeah, I did that because according to Ralph, according to Ralph-
Wait, 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 come up to the microphone.
Sorry, sorry. According to Ralph, you guys are doing the certified letters to make sure everybody got it. Well, our mailman decided to just put it in my neighbor's. We were standing outside and didn't get him to sign for it, so it's not even legit. So we just didn't want this delayment again because the mailman didn't do what he was supposed to do. And we're for the project. We're not for the delayment, but I understand the cost, and I feel bad for the people, one-income households. I wish there were grants or something because I want water. Two weeks ago, I woke up on a Sunday, I didn't have water. I want the peace of mind that when I turn the faucet on, there's going to be water. So that's mine. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, that would be all the cards I have on this topic.
Okay.
What about my husband's? He submitted online.
We don't have online comment cards.
We don't have?
Okay. Oh, there it is. It should be up there.
These are, yes, these are not for this topic. These are for a different, these are for a different topic. We'll make sure it gets noted.
All right. Commissioner Sax, you're recognized. Our Vice Mayor, sorry.
That's okay. Just call me Maria. Second, wait a second. Okay, staff. Todd, you and I have been over water issues for quite a while. Just to inform everybody here, how many developments are there, if you know, in the county where we have to mandate county water over well water? Do we have any ideas that like, even in a percentage? We don't know? Okay.
I don't know that we particularly mandate county water over well water. I mean, yeah, we could, we could check with the Health Department to see if there's any kind of decrees or anything related to that.
My issue, the issue, the reason I ask that is this. When somebody buys a house, they know they're getting well water. They know the problems with well water. When you lose your electricity, pump goes off, you don't have any water. Sometimes the water's not so clean. You've got to spend a lot of money on making sure that the well not only works, but you're getting clean water. So there's already a cost, which is a part of having well water. I know this because I have been on well water for 30 years on my property. County came in, said we have to have county water. I wasn't happy. However, now that I know that the county water is the best in the state, is that true? Correct. We have the best-
Nation, country, world.
Best water in the world. But certainly in the state of Florida. I heard someone speak up and say that they, they weren't informed, they weren't educated about how great county water is. Can we, do we have the power, the man, woman power to go out and explain, or have we already done that to this organization, this HOA? Has someone gone out and talked to the folks about the issues with well water and the great county water we have?
Yeah, Vice Mayor Ralph, can you go over the schedule of which we've informed some of the residents in the location?
Yes, Vice Mayor. We had several informational meetings with the residents, informed them how the cost was derived, the benefits of having county water, and to answer any questions that they had.
Okay, so everyone there was informed and educated as to the differences between well water and the beauty of our county water. My last question is this. We are required to send out certified letters to the residents. Some residents did not receive the certified letters. It wasn't that they didn't accept them, but they just didn't receive them for whatever reason, mailman or rain, whatever. They didn't receive them. So now there's going to be a delay, right? So we have to redo it, and the cost is going to go up.
No.
No. The cost is going to stay the same. Excellent. Okay. Perfect. So the cost is going to stay the same. Could we, in deference to the District Commissioner, can we at least see if there are any grants available for, to lessen the costs of the hookup? And is this possible that there could be grants available for clean water here in, and I'm looking at the attorney, he's about to speak? Sir?
So the ordinance does require that it's 100% paid by the landowner. So we would have to, we would have to amend the ordinance in order to apply any grants here.
So the law is that it has to be borne by the landowner. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Well, thank you very much. I just want to make sure that everything's been done properly so that once they get their county water, they're going to be so happy. And I thank you for the work you're doing on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Can I just remind my fellow members of the Board, what is in front of us today is whether or not we're going to postpone this item? All right. Commissioner Bernard?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I'm trying to remember, with the ARPA funds that we received, weren't we going to use some of those dollars to convert folks from septic-
To sewer.
To sewer.
Correct.
So if we were going to do that, then wouldn't we have to change our ordinance to allow us to use some of those dollars to?
So Commissioner Mayor, if I may, this is, this is not to wastewater project. This is specifically drinking water. So under the septic-to-sewer conversions that we've allocated under ARPA, those are specific to a waste conversion system. So a totally different system than this. And under the drinking water, and part of this, I mean, the way you kind of look at sort of water utilities and our different customers, you know, these initial hookups are sort of like you become a shareholder of the system, right? So that initial piece of it is becoming that shareholder in that entire system that pays for, you know, the asset costs that are involved, and then your monthlies are your fees that are associated with that. So unfortunately, and the water side and the drinking water side of it, just there aren't really many, you know, opportunities to offset those costs. And the wastewater side of it, there are certainly more opportunities for us at the federal-state level to do that. So unfortunately, that just, we don't have those dollars to be able to do that, Commissioner.
Just one more question. But what about in the property taxes that these residents pay? You know, they pay property taxes, then, you know-
Doesn't pay for water.
Yeah. Shouldn't, you know, there's a way for them to get some benefit, you know, from the county.
Yeah. And just, Mayor, if I might, to that issue, you know, obviously, you know, all of our residents pay- all of our residents pay, pay property taxes into the system. Water utilities as an enterprise fund is strictly a fee-based operation. We don't rely on ad valorem dollars to, to run the water utility system. And likewise, you know, the general fund doesn't rely on water utilities to, to offset some of those costs. So, you know, we've been fortunate as a water utility. One of the reasons why, you know, we're recognized with AAA bond ratings for, for, for several decades, just because of that financial responsibility and that fee base that goes to pay for that entire system. But understood. Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. Two questions. Is it a county ordinance or state law that prevents the, any grant funds going towards the water conversions?
It's in the county ordinance.
And do we know the purpose of that, the original intent?
I, I don't. I have seen, I think other departments have at some point in time have contributed. I think engineering at one point in time did contribute to some road projects. I don't think they do anymore, but I don't have the history behind it.
Okay. If I could get that, I'd appreciate it. And also, again, because I'm still learning the, what we can and can't do, is it possible even if the water utilities is not directly contributing to our ad valorem dollars, to give a credit to residents who do it? Like, we're talking $160 a month or so approximately?
I don't have everything. I don't, I think that would be problematic though, just as my initial thought process on that.
All right. Well, if we could just dig into a little bit, see how we could help the residents. People want water and some people have legit concerns about paying for things, especially now.
Commissioner, can I add? There is also an agreement that the county entered into with Indian Trails Improvement District. So any of these special assessments that are in that district actually get a 10% discount. So there is money, they do actually get 10% towards that.
So currently, they get 10% towards the hookup of everything?
Towards, towards overall cost.
The overall cost?
Comes from a fund that the county and the Indian Trails established.
Commissioner Woodward, do you recognize?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question on, this is 12 properties. Is this, the way the bid went out, is this like an all or nothing? Are, is there the ability for some of the property owners to opt out? Or is this like the whole grid set up for this? First question.
Yes, the whole 12 properties have to be assessed. We do, once we get the petition, we do work with Indian Trails and they say this is the block that you work with. So we do petition those 12. Now again, those 12 do not have to connect. If they don't choose to, like the, some of the residents that have the GORO systems, they don't have to connect, but they do have to pay the original capital outlay of that.
That's the $26,000 and then the 4, 4,500 is the additional?
They wouldn't have to pay that until the time they so choose to become customers of ours. Then they pay the connection fee.
Okay. So if we do the postponement now, this is not going out to rebid or anything? This is just to send out certified letters to 12 properties? Since it's only 12 properties, is there, it's 12 homes, can we have a quick follow-up to make sure everyone kind of gets it and, and we can move this along? So if we do the postponement, contact them also by phone or whatever?
Yes, we also have another public informational meeting set up with them as well.
Okay. Because we're talking 12 households, you know, not like half the county. Okay. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Barnett, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Some of this may have already been covered. I appreciate you indulging me, just so I'm clear in my own head. With regards to the postponement itself, which is what the mayor said we're discussing now, is the postponement due to the fact that the certification is required by ordinance or statute?
The certification, the certified mail going out is a policy directive that the Board of County Commissioners made when a similar item was brought back to them. And so going forward, that decision was made that when we go out to a vote on connections into the water utility system, that it would be by certified mail. And this was one that just sort of got caught between that policy directive, having gone out to vote and then the advertisement to come here. And so that's why we're asking for the postponement, to be consistent with that policy going forward.
The policy directive, thank you. And I think one of the commenters may have, I'm not sure if I remember correctly, there was a concern that if the postponement were approved, later on the assessment, the individual assessment would increase from $26,940 to about $40,000. But I think you confirmed that would not be the case. The increase, the cost would not increase.
That's correct, Commissioner. We had an opportunity to work with the contractor on this and they're aware of the, the delay if the postponement goes forward in the project. And we're willing to honor the same price that was quoted that we have here for the project when it comes back to the BCC for final decision later on.
That's all I have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you. Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mayor. I am in favor of the postponement. And information I would like, when this does come back to us, is we have done this before. So there have been other projects, other projects before. We probably need to know, you know, if we can go out and get grant money, that would be great. But the grant money would have to actually help people who have already gone through the process because it would be an unfair advantage to those going forward. So if there is such a thing like that, that would be fabulous. And also, if we knew how many other areas that we've done this for, that could help us better understand what we might want to write into a grant. Did I make sense?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So with that, I would like to make a motion that we postpone item 4B1.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Marino.
Second.
I have a second from Commissioner Baxter. Any further discussion? All in favor, all opposed this item carries unanimously, seven to zero. All right. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on to airports. And this, I believe, is, this first item is a, is going to be 5A1. And this is just a, as I like to refer to it, as a Weinroth item. Because they need to come to in front of us to get permission to transfer money. So, does anyone need a presentation on this?
I do not.
Okay. Would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make one.
Okay, we have a motion from, from Vice Mayor Sax, a second from Commissioner Marino. All in favor, all opposed. That motion carries seven to zero. Now, moving on, we have another airport item. And this one, I think we do, are going to need a little bit of a presentation. I know we have a couple of comment cards here, I think. One? We have one comment card. Okay. So just brief, brief recap of what, why, what we're doing.
So this resolution provides for the repeal of Section 2-6A of the Airport Regulations, which provides that pure turbojet aircraft and aircraft in excess of 12,500 pounds engaging in air cargo operations are prohibited at the Palm Beach County Park Airport, which is also known as Lantana Airport. Approval of this item is required by the Corrective Action Plan, approved by the Board on December 6th, and has already been submitted to the FAA. The repeal is necessary to bring the county into compliance with federal law and FAA requirements and to restore the county's ability to receive federal grant funding for the county's airport system. As I mentioned, the Department of Airports has already submitted the Corrective Action Plan. In pursuant to Board direction, the Department of Airports also requested that the FAA conduct an assessment of the airspace impacts to determine how jet aircraft may most safely be accommodated on the three runways at the Lantana Airport, including whether any modifications of airspace use or procedures would be appropriate. And also to review the environmental impacts of the approval of the Corrective Action Plan pursuant to the National Environmental Policy Act. The repeal will become effective upon expiration of the promulgation period, which is a period of four weeks from posting or publication. And the suspension of the jet restriction will continue pending the effective date of the repeal. With regard to next steps, we plan to continue to engage with airport users regarding community concerns, complete the Part 150 Noise Compatibility Study, including development of noise exposure maps, and draft noise mitigation measures. And to emblem those noise mitigation measures, continue engagement with the FAA to mitigate noise and enhance safety. And we also plan to meet with the City of Atlantis to discuss potential modifications to the inter-local agreement consistent with the county's federal obligations. We will also be restarting our master plan update for that airport, which was paused due to the Part 150 study. And we will be issuing a RFP for a new noise monitoring system at that airport.
Right. Thank you. Any questions of staff? Not hearing any? All right. We have a speaking card.
Thank you. Alan Kolbach from the City of Atlantis.
Vice Mayor.
Vice Mayor.
Welcome, Vice Mayor.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners, good morning. My name is Alan Kolback. I'm the Vice Mayor of the City of Atlantis. And I am here regarding the jet ban repeal. Previously, I provided the Commission with the safety concerns of LA, Lantana Airport neighboring communities and emphasized the need for continuing collaboration with the county. And we certainly appreciate the responsiveness of the county, the support of the mayor regarding the safety issues that have been raised. And would like to offer a special thanks to Laura Beebe, who in response to your support, wrote a very compelling letter to the FAA on December 19th requesting the agency's participation in addressing those issues. We also appreciate the county's commitment to work toward establishing a transparent and comprehensive system, a technology system for noise and operations monitoring. But an important safety issue has been brought to our attention and wanted to raise that. And as a matter of fact, Laura and I had an opportunity to discuss it before the meeting. And that is that some of the jets that are landing and taking off at LNA have been observed to be using every inch of the runway on which they are operating. And as I've mentioned before, we have a aviation advisor, JDA Aviation Technology Solutions, which specializes in FAA certifications and safety. And JDA referred us to the FAA's final decision, which says that the county, as part of its corrective action plan, must permit immediate access by complainant, i.e. Mr. Foreman, who filed a suit, and aircraft capable of utilizing LNA's existing runways, infrastructure, and facilities. Now, JDA has advised us that the county has the responsibility for determining the type of jets that are capable of operating at LNA. And they further advised us that the FAA, from their reading of the order, authorizes operations on two of Lantana's three runways. Those runways are now currently rated for King Air, which is a turboprop, twin turboprop plane. And that's rated as the critical or highest, if you will, largest plane that can land. To change, according to our advisors, the critical aircraft type on these two runways from King Air to jets, the county's responsible for undertaking a runway design length analysis for each runway. And we've got a considerable amount of information from them concerning the work that's been done by other airport sponsors. Right now, and as a matter of fact, Laura and I had a discussion, the FAA and the county currently takes the position that it's up to the pilot to determine whether or not he can land there. And based on what we're hearing from residents, the fact that every inch of airspace is being, or runway space is being used and we're immediately surrounded by a residential area, this raises, to me, an appropriate oversight concern that it's left to the pilot whether or not they can land there or not. And there's not some oversight by either the FAA or the county, and especially the county as the airport owner, to determine or at least specify, these are the type of aircraft that can land at LNA. So I, I'd like to see, I understand that there's been no study done by this, by anybody in terms of determining what jets can land there. So I'd like to ask that if, if it's not been conducted, that'd be so. Finally, we want to thank you and we urge the ongoing collaboration. Number one, to follow up with the FAA. The FAA has been totally unresponsive to the concerns that have been raised. Laura wrote a great letter. Like to know that we're going to have some Plan B if the FAA is unresponsive. And secondly, we appreciate the opportunity to be able to work toward a resolution on updating the inter-local agreement. And be happy if, if any of you have any questions or want further details, we'd be happy to meet with you. And I thank you very much.
Thank, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Do you want to address any of these?
Sure. The termination of critical aircraft is done through the master plan process. We are updating our master plan. It's based on the types of aircraft that actually operate at the airport. So that will be coming to the Board for approval through the master planning process. It is open to the public and the community may be involved in that process. With regard to being able to define the specific aircraft that may land at, at an airport, we will be discussing with our attorneys about that. I don't believe that we are actually capable of doing that. However, we'd be happy to sit down with the City of Atlantis and discuss this further with our attorneys and our consultants as well.
All right. Thank you. All right. Any further questions? Seeing none? All right. Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. So Vice Mayor Sax makes a motion on item 5A2, items A and B. And we have a second from Commissioner Woodward. Any further discussions? Seeing none? All in favor, all opposed? This item is carried seven to zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I look forward to further discussions as we move forward. All right. Moving on, 5B1. And this is, we gave staff direction to bring back and talk about a 401A plan that was Commissioner Bernard's brought to the Board a few months ago. All right, I'm going to run to the restroom as I get started.
Got it.
As Vice Mayor, you can go ahead and proceed, Mr. Vaudler.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Commissioners Administrator Baker, County Attorney Kaufman. Before you today is staff's, a brief presentation that we wanted to provide to you on the issue of a 401A plan or Special Pay Plan, as they're also known as, as becoming part of an additional county investment option for employee participation. We've had the, yes. I'm going to give you a quick intro of some of the folks that are here with us today so that you know who's been working with us through this. First off, I wanted to thank Reginald Durin, Assistant County Administrator. And, and he's been very helpful in sort of formulating some of the discussion points that we put forward to you. He has administrative oversight over human resources. And with us is Wayne Condry, Director of Human Resources, Maria Figueroa, Deputy Director of Human Resources. And then our legal brain up here, David Adi, who has helped us through a number of opinions that we've worked on. You'll also see on the screen behind us, coming to you, one of our outside counsel, who the Board of County Commissioners gave us the authority to work with in answering a few questions that we had some discrepancies in understanding at the last board meeting. We asked for that in the Board direction. Jeffrey from Greenberg Trowrigg is joining us. And, and so we were able to clarify some of the questions that we had about what we could or couldn't do as part of this. And I think maybe it would be best if we started with just the presentation that we have up on the screen and in front of you. Just to give you a brief overview, I've tried to, to share some of this information with some of our newer Commissioners, particularly some of our previous presentations that we did back at the October 18th meeting. Some of the information contained in here is similar to that information that we provided, but tried to narrow it in a little bit more and then also to help facilitate some of today's discussion. So just first off, you know, what, what is a Special Pay Plan? And to, just to share with you, in Palm Beach County, we have currently one plan that's called a 457B, which is a discretionary plan that employees may participate in. It is managed by Nationwide. And that is something that employees can contribute up to a certain amount, about $22,000 is the cap on that, that they're able to do that for, for each calendar year. The 401A plan, we do have a 401A plan in Palm Beach County, but only for one individual in Palm Beach County. And that was set up decades ago for someone who was ineligible to participate in the FRS system. Nationwide currently manages that one plan and is just about ready to, to retire that particular plan for that one individual. But these are special pay plans that are customized, the 401A plan, to meet the needs of an individual participant. And the one thing about these plans are, once you identify what participants are going to participate and at what rate, either by the employer or... to participate and at what rate, either by the employer or the employee contribution, that's how that plan moves forward. There are different ways you can do it, and the reason why they call it the special pay is oftentimes it's not necessarily on the employer's side of the contribution. The way that the vacation and sick leave comes in, the employer bundles that, and that's called, considered a special pay, that they would then pay into that plan. And for purposes of today's conversation, the directive from this Board came back to say, let's look specifically at unused sick and vacation time that would be paid out upon termination of employment with Palm Beach County, as the use of those dollars specific for the creation of this potential 401A plan. And then through these plans, the employer contributes that special pay, and then one of the tax savings benefits of this is that both the employer and the employee receives about a 7.65% savings from not paying, having to pay FICA and Medicare taxes on the special pay plans. Some of these are set up to include mandatory employer and employee contributions. We're not specifically looking in this particular one. For it being both sides, it would be more as the special pay, specific to the sick and vacation leave time. And then in terms of the IRS allowing for the employee used unused sick and vacation time and that paid time off, there has been allowed in a private letter ruling for the use of some of this under rule, and that was some of the clarification that we'll get into in a minute, that we asked of our special counsel, who's with us. And then final, however we customize that 401A plan, those contributions will be mandatory on how they go into that plan. So what are some of the pros and cons of the 401A? We've gone over some of these before in front of the Board. So I'll share with you here that the annual contributions to the Board are, and actually this is a new number, 66,000. It was 61,000 for last fiscal year, but it's now $66,000 that employees can contribute into that plan, so a much higher level of contribution rate. We talked about the savings that each of the employee, employer can save on that, 7.65%, which for us is somewhere in the neighborhood of about $150,000 between both employee and employers. The advantages are it allows these contributions to accumulate on a tax-advantaged basis for their retirement. We talked about the customization of this plan, and we'll give you some examples later on of what that could look like if you want to move forward. You can group employees into classes, you can put contribution amounts that are specific for different classes. And then again, it allows employees to save money for retirement with tax benefits, and it's not subject to federal income tax until the point of withdrawal of those. What are some of the cons of some of this? You know, some of our employees just might not be very familiar with investment accounts. And, you know, we've got a lot of employees that do participate in the 457B, but many don't. So having a new investment account and understanding, you know, what needs to go into that, you know, they'd have to maybe consult with others in order to look into some of the disbursements of that. The mandatory nature of this is one thing where, once we as a policy board and as an administration decide who is going to make the contributions and they'll apply to, that's mandatory in going into the plan. And then the potential that, you know, anytime we add new products or new services within the county, the potential always rises that you might need additional staff to handle some of the administrative aspects of the particular plan. In terms of the 401A investment plan, just a quick guideline for you. The 401A, again, is sort of a tax-advantaged employer-sponsored defined contribution and personal pension savings account, so it's really a money account that it goes into. Those limits that we have are $66,000 that are eligible to go into that on a yearly basis, and in this it would be a one-time contribution. The one thing that we wanted to point out, too, as we talk about the savings, there's also the point of how you withdraw and when withdrawals are allowed. And so in order to be eligible to withdraw tax-free out of a 401A, you need to be 59 and 1/2 in order to have no penalties, or if you reach a certain, your retirement age, even if you're not 59 and 1/2, in terms of your eligible service within your class, you're able to withdraw without penalty. If you withdraw under that or without those exemptions, then a 10% penalty would apply to those withdrawals. You could also roll in a 401A into other investment accounts as well, after dollars go in there after the fact. And then the mandatory participation that ensues. I did mention briefly about the 457B, which is our current plan that we have, in addition to contributing into the FRS, which all of our employees are required to do, as well as the county itself. This just gives you a snapshot to just understand some of our employees, where they are in terms of contributions that they've made on their own behalf into their 457Bs, and just gives you an overall percentage of how many are participating and at what level that they are participating. So, a little bit more than half of our employees are currently participating in the current 457B. About 9% of those who are participating are contributing annually at 19,000 or over, but a bulk of our employees, 2,119, are participating between $20 and $4,999 a year into that particular plan. So I wanted to just briefly discuss our vacation leave and sick leave plans and how we do that in the county today, since this is really focused and much more narrowly tailored towards sick and vacation leave. So the current policy that we have in the county is that vacation leave accrual happens, and it ranges between four hours per pay period and 6.16 hours per pay period. And on the chart before, you can see that's typically based on your years of service to the county, so zero to one, and then ultimately starts going up to two to five, and then every year as you get up to 10, you max out at 10 years and beyond at 6.16 hours. Sick leave accrual is consistent with all employees in the county. Everyone gets four accrual hours that are contributed, and those are there for them to use. The sick and vacation leave policy that we have is slightly different, though, between vacation and sick leave. So, under vacation leave, you know, when you recruit that week to week and year to year, you can build up balances in that vacation leave. But you cannot accumulate or carry over more than 400 hours a year. So once you reach that 400 hour and you go into the new year, you lose that overage from being able to use that. You are, however, for those of our employees that go into the drop program and the Florida Retirement System Deferred Retirement Option Plan, is a plan that comes sort of towards the latter portion of somebody's career. It effectively, they effectively retire as an employee when they go into the drop, and they have at least five years to work and before they officially leave their duties. But you can be paid out up to 500 hours under that drop, and so that I share with you just because we have a number of employees who use some of that accumulated leave that they get to pay into their drop. And so they use that on the front end of going into drop, and that helps to count towards their average final compensation that ultimately determines their final retirement benefits when they officially retire from the FRS system. Sick leave, as we talked about, is four hours per pay period. Sick leave can continue to accumulate and roll over from year to year. It doesn't get swept. However, in terms of payouts, if you're retiring from the county or terminating from the county, you can only be paid out if you were hired before 1994, 50% of your total sick leave that you have up to 500 hours, or after 1994, 10% of that total allocation up to 500 hours. So, it takes a considerable amount of time, I think, to work in the county to develop, you know, that level of sick accumulation, to have that full payout if you were hired after 1994. So, that's just a little bit on some of our sick and vacation policies. Briefly, I did talk a little bit about the drop plan, just so you're aware. Since we do have a lot of employees who, as they enter drop, use this option both as part of their average final compensation. And then just wanted to note, as we talk about this plan and the customization of it, you know, we've got different employees. We have regular employees, we have bargain unit employees, and within some of those bargain unit agreements, there are differences as to what level of payout and accumulation they can use in that. So I just put that in there as a point of reference to let you know that if we were to move forward with any kind of plan, and we wanted to include non-bargaining unit employees in it, or bargain unit employees in it, we would have to negotiate as part of that plan with those employees. So, first off, thank you to the Board of County Commissioners to allowing us the opportunity to go back and work with our legal team on some questions that we had. And two of the bigger questions that we worked with our outside counsel, we just summarized some of those findings for you on this particular slide. One, is it possible to require mandated employee to participate in two investment programs at the same time? And just so you know, our employees, because of the contribution that the state of Florida requires each individual employee to pay into their FRS, it is a mandate from the state that they pay into it, as well as a mandate from the county to pay a certain amount for each of those employees at a prescribed rate every year by the legislature. And the answer that came back from our outside counsel was no prohibition exists that prohibits a municipality from establishing a 401A plan that is not part of the FRS. So that said, no, you can have 401A plans coexist at the same time that you have an FRS plan that's mandatory as well. And then the other question was, can the county utilize the 401A plan to solely contribute vacation and/or sick leave balances for employees separating from employment and not require any other contributions to the plan? And working with our outside counsel, their opinion was yes, that the county may utilize the 401A plan to solely contribute vacation and/or sick leave balances for employees separating from employment and not require any other types of contributions to the plan. And just on this slide, I would turn to David Adi to see if he had anything else that he cared to add or wanted to offer any other thoughts from our counsel.
Alan. The only thing...
Yes, the only thing I wanted to add, first of all, good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. The only thing I wanted to add was, there was a concern that we would have two mandatory plans. In other words, employees already have the FRS, we have the Deferred Compensation Plan of 457, that as you heard, only 50% of our employees participate in. So the question was whether or not we could legally have another mandatory plan that would require employees to contribute against their own discretion. So that was what we wanted to verify from our tax experts, and they advised us that it was okay to have that. So, it's just a matter of deciding who would be in the carve-out among our employees that would be required to participate in the plan.
Okay. Thank you. As the Board contemplates the 401A plan and whether you'd like to move forward with adding this to the county's complement, we talked a little bit about the customization of these plans and what that might look like. And we can certainly have a deeper conversation about that today, if you like, or if you would, you know, if the idea is to move forward with this and select a provider, we can reserve this conversation to a later date. But I just wanted to just share with you just a few different ideas of how a plan like this could be set up. We did talk about sort of that maximum, roughly maximum contribution, that somebody can max out at 400 vacation and 500 sick leave hours. It may vary a little bit for someone who might have a little over 400 in that last year that could do that, but we wanted to just put that as a standard at the high end of what could be contributed into that. But a sample of what, you know, could be done on this is, number one, you can just say, we want to use 100% of unused vacation and sick hours deposited in the 401A of a non-bargaining employee. Or you might say that 100% of vacation and sick leave into the 401A of non-bargaining employees who've been here for a time certain, let's just say 10 years or more, and maybe have given them more time to accumulate a higher amount of extra sick and vacation time accumulated, as opposed to a newer employee that might not have much to be deposited into that plan. Again, you can get into the percentage of it, 75% of sick and vacation time deposited into the 401A, or 50% of that deposited in there. And then at later times, as we work with our collective bargaining units, we can work with them in terms of negotiations with their units for adding these based on later negotiations. We've also, you know, talked about mandatory participation by employees of a certain pay grade and above, or mandatory participation of highly compensated employees who might have a much higher level of sick and vacation time that they've accumulated, or mandatory participation employees above the age of 59 and 1/2 at age of termination, if the wish is that you don't want anybody to be impacted by any penalties from the IRS for early withdrawals from those kinds of plans. So we just offered some of these out there for you as just a guide as we look into that. And when we talk about customization of these plans, I mean, they are highly customizable. And one thing you might hear, and we've got representatives here from a couple of different plan providers, if you have additional questions about how those can be customized, I mean, this just kind of lays it out for you, but you can see just how customizable some of these can be. And the plan that you start with, you know, today could be very different, look different than a plan a couple of years down the line. You can start one way, and it can evolve into, you know, other rules that are drawn to that particular plan. So we just wanted to put that in there for purposes of discussion, let you know just how customizable some of those could be. And then finally, coming back to the Board, there were two things that we wanted to ask, obviously for direction from the Board. One was, would you like for the inclusion of 401A plan to be part of the county investment option for mandatory employee participation that directs the designated unused and/or vacation time into the special pay plan? So that consideration is for you as part one of this agenda item, or do you want to remain with the county's status quo today, which is not the inclusion of the 401A? And then the second part is the issuance of the RFP, if the Board would like to move forward to issue an RFP, and then whether you would like us to come back with recommendations for one or more providers, 40401A. I can tell you that most governments that have 401As that we've researched and found have usually a single provider that they use, but we've been able to identify maybe one or two that had multiple providers in those 401As. So Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners, that is our brief presentation for you this morning, and we're happy to answer any other additional questions that you might have.
All right. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I think Todd's become a specialist on special... Thank you very much, Todd, for the presentation, and thank you to your entire team for bringing this together to us. You know, for me, I just hope that, I don't think we should maintain the status quo, I think that we have the legal reason to be able to move forward. I believe that it is important for us to be able to be as flexible as possible, because, you know, what we may decide today may be something that's a little bit different a couple of years from now, as we're more, as we understand how to use this plan better. So I think that flexibility is really important to me for us, not just today, but in the future. I do have a couple of questions to the outside counsel. I think his name is Mr. Jeffrey. I think in Slide 5, you know, it says it was, which the question was, can the county utilize the 401A plan to solely contribute vacation or sick leave? And the answer, based on outside counsel, was yes. I just kind of would like to know, do we have the, what's the legal authority from the outside counsel?
He's on mute. You can't hear him.
Can you unmute him?
You can't hear him.
We can hear you now.
Okay.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, great, great, great.
Okay, it's nice to be here today to talk to you. You know, we searched, my colleague and I, Terry Moore, who's also with us today, we searched through the Florida statutes of Commissioner Bernard, and we could identify no prohibition that would prohibit a municipality from establishing a qualified 401A plan that is not part of the Florida Retirement System. However, there is a provision in Chapter 112.652 that does not allow an FRS participant to receive a retirement credit from a 401A... to receive a retirement credit from a 401A plan, which is based upon service with respect to which the participant is already receiving credit under FRS, which makes sense, the same rule under the code. You can't, you can't have a duplication of credit for the same period of service. But, but the, the good news here is under drop, the, the way it's set up, is you, you retire only under the plan, not, not on service, you're still, you're still receiving compensation, okay? So therefore, you're not, you're not accruing any retirement credit for the same period of service you'd be in the qualified plan. So, so to sum up, there's nothing in the Florida statutes that wouldn't allow you to do it. The only, the only provision we can see that could be a potential problem, which it's not, is if you're giving credit for the, for the same period of time you are receiving credit under FRS, and that's not the case here because you've ceased accrual. Commissioner Bernard, does that answer your question so far?
Yes, I do have one follow-up. I, I think I heard Todd mention a private letter ruling.
Yes.
Can you go over that for me just to make sure?
Sure, I'd be glad to. The second question is, is that you asked whether sick and vacation time had contributed to the qualified plan by the employer or by the job participant. And, you know, once again, in our view, that's okay. Now, the authority under, under, under the code for that is under two revenue rulings. And I'm, I'd be glad, I'd be happy to go over that with you if you'd like, and appropriate letter ruling. The, I might as well go, you know, talk about the revenue rulings first. The rulings generally provide, and these are IRS rulings, that a plan will not fail to meet the qualification requirements of the Internal Revenue Code. That's one, the plan documents contain appropriate language that allows it. You have to make sure when you do draft the plan that the right line is, is there. And contributions don't exceed the statutory contribution limitations. And under the IRS, according to the, to the IRS private letter ruling, Commissioner Bernard, which is 2007-2102, amounts placed in an individual account for a participant must receive its share of the actual earning and losses for the plan in order to be, in order to be considered as a defined contribution plan. So to answer your question, under the IRS private letter ruling, ruling, you have to include an allocation formula that, that's evenly distributed over all accounts. So, so that each, each participant in the plan receives his or her share of the earnings. That is what the private, the private letter ruling holds.
Thank you. I just have another follow-up. In regards to the private letter ruling, moving forward, should we, should any of the providers have a private letter ruling, or should we be okay with or without the private letter ruling?
Yeah, okay. You'd need, there are only specialized cases where you need a, a private letter ruling. And I don't believe you would need one here. What do you think, Chair? Do you think they would need a private letter ruling? I, I don't believe so.
Okay, I just want to make sure. And another question, this is to Todd, you had mentioned that you can roll over the 401A. Would you be able to roll the 401A to one of our, the 457B plan? I just want to make sh-
It depends if the 457B plan has a provision that allows the rollover, and I'm sure that it was drafted properly, and it does.
So if, if it's okay, I might defer to some of the providers that are here that, that work with us either. I know that Kurt is here from BenCor and Angela from Nationwide. If maybe one of those would like to on the record, just to, to share that what plans the 401A could roll into. Kurt and I have talked a number of times about 401A and, and sort of rollovers, so.
Thank you, Todd. Good morning, Mayor, Commissioners. As it relates to rollovers, your outside counsel was exactly correct. It is dependent on the plan that you have in place to allow those rollovers into that plan. Assuming it does, which virtually all plans do, then yes, you can roll the money from the 401A into a 457.
Is it Kurt? Todd had mentioned one of the question, one of the statements that I think Todd mentioned was whether we should go with one or a couple of providers. What's your, in the industry, what's the typical norm?
Because of the mandatory nature of the plans, which Todd has outlined in the presentation, we typically go with a single provider because there is no individual participant-level enrollment like a 457 where the employee is making the choice. Everything is done from an administrative perspective on an automated basis to roll that money in. So it's, from an administrative perspective, much easier to do it with a single provider.
And then just one last follow-up. Are we able, the flexibility that Todd had mentioned, what's your opinion about keeping that flexibility option?
Yes, who, whoever you, the county decides to move forward with, you just need to make sure that whatever plan is in place has the ability to be modified with a simple change to any adoption agreement or the plan going forward. Our experience is that, you know, our plans are modified with a simple amendment to the plan, which can change eligibility definitions, contribution amounts, all of the factors that Todd has outlined in the presentation. So you just need to make sure you have that flexibility going forward, but most administrators should be able to accommodate that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, you done? Okay, Commissioner Barnett, you are next.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Todd and David, for your presentation and for thoroughly explaining the program to me more than once. I, I like it, I am inclined to go along with it. I do have a question. You mentioned the pros and cons, and it seems the pros significantly outweigh the cons, but I was curious about what burden, if any, would be placed upon those implementing this plan with regards to staff and increased costs. Can you talk a little bit about that, if a study or any kind of work has been done to investigate that, please?
Mayor, thank you, Commissioner Barnett. You know, that was one, when, when staff was sort of going through a number of these items to, to present to the BCC and trying to give you as good of a balance as we could in terms of both sides of the particular plans, when it came to sort of just the staff time and some on the administrative side of this, you know, we work, and I can tell you, I've asked Maria 100 times to run different scenarios about, you know, vacation, sick payouts, number of employees, bargaining, non-bargaining, who then in turn works with the clerk's office to, you know, provide some of those, those runnings for us so that we can kind of dive into that. So just sort of in that experience of understanding, you know, what we've done to get to this point. And then depending on how a plan might be customized and how, you know, general or specific it may be, you know, anytime in our experience when we've asked constitutional officers or other folks to, you know, take on some additional responsibilities, usually forthcoming is some kind of discussion with us about, hey, we've got a lot of work we're doing here, you know, these are more things that you're putting on our plate. So while we've not run any analysis per se on what that might be, we just wanted to make sure that, just from our experience that we were going through, that we said, you know what, let's make sure the Board is aware of this today and the last time we presented, because we don't want to be, to surprise anybody if we or the clerk or somebody else comes back at a later date and says, "I need a half a position or a full position to work with us to, to accommodate some of that workload." But, but to your point, though, of the pros and cons, I mean, we've tried to at least paint a balanced picture for you of what both sides of this issue are. I mean, there are some really valid points on why this is good, there are some really valid points on why, you know, for some employees, this might not work very well for them. So, but that's one where, that's probably the best analysis I can give you from what our experience has been, Commissioner.
Thank you. Any further questions here? All right, Commissioner Baxter, you're recognized.
Hi, I absolutely love the idea of the 401A and employees being able to contribute their vacation, sick time, and so on. What struck me, and maybe you have an answer for this, is what about, and I mentioned this briefly in our general review, what about pregnant women banking sick time? Can they still cash out if we choose to do this? Like, say they're planning to have a baby and they've accrued so much sick time, does this prevent them from using that money or those hours towards that sick leave? Because say they're not just going on leave, let's say they decide, hey, I want to take a year or two or longer to stay at home with their baby, and this would help offset some of those costs. Are we, A, limiting that, and/or somebody who may get injured, they have a bank of hours? By making it mandatory, and I love the flexibility option, are we taking that away from them?
Commissioner, really good points that you bring up, and I think for the purposes of this particular proposal that we're talking about, the way that it, it would be structured is that these payments would be made to the plan upon what's called termination, and that means leaving employment. So for example, if somebody's taking a leave of absence from the county for a specified period of time and planning on returning to employment, they wouldn't be terminating from employment, so they would hold that until such time as they came back. If they left employment and severed employment, and their thought was, maybe I'll come back in a year or two or three, they would start anew at the time that they came back for their employment, and then their vacation and sick time would begin accruing again at that point.
You're not answering my question.
Okay.
Would they be able to cash out their vacation or sick time or whatever the county currently allows and take it with them? Or are they, would they then be mandatory or mandated to put those dollars into the 401A?
If the 401A were in place and they were part of whatever class was mandated to contribute into the 401A, those dollars would flow through the 401A.
So they couldn't use their own?
They couldn't, they couldn't specifically, like, it couldn't be deposited into their bank account, right, for them to just have cash to use. It would go to the 401A, and then they would make determinations on how they would take it out. I mean, they could take it out of the 401A was an option, and depending on their levels of service or their age, you know, there would be penalties that could apply to that. But, I mean, they would still have access to the dollars in the 401A after they left employment to get those out, but not as direct as it happens today. And just so the Board is, knows, the way today that our plan, the way we deal with unused sick and vacation leave is that when you leave employment, either voluntarily, involuntary, however, whenever you terminate from employment, whatever eligible unused sick and vacation leave balance that you have, that's there to be paid out, is essentially, becomes your, part of your last paycheck, and that is paid to you in your last paycheck. So it, it gets submitted as, and primarily every county employee has a, an automatic deposit into their account, it would get automatically deposited into their bank account. That's the way that the system works today. Under a 401A, for the prescribed individuals that apply to under that 401A, it would, it would not go that, that route, it would go into the bank account, or I'm sorry, the 401A. However, let's say we had scenarios where you only used 50% or 25% or 75%, then that percent would go to the 401A, and then the remaining balance would go in the way that it goes today, which is into that last paycheck.
So would the employees get to choose what percent?
No. One of the, one of the things about the 401A, as we talk about the customization and the flexibility of it, what we determine to be that plan is what it is, and, and that's how it moves forward. So the employee couldn't say, well, there's a 401A, I really don't want to participate in, in it, I know, you know, I'm one of the employees as part of it. That option doesn't exist for those employees, it's just part of some of the rules that were made that I would assume relate to some of the tax advantages as well for, for getting into those types of plans. So yeah, that, that choice wouldn't be there for them to do that, except if it were split a certain, you know, by a percentage ways.
We talked about flexibility. Would they have, if we mandated that they participate in the 401A, and they chose to roll it over into the 457B, does that plan allow a withdrawal? Without penalty?
And Maria, maybe I'll ask you to share some of your comments on that.
After termination, the employees can withdraw funds out of the Nationwide account. Angela from Nationwide is here, and she can give some additional information with that. We already have those accounts established, and it's very fluid for employees to be able to take withdrawals out of their Nationwide, but I'd like for her to speak more towards that.
Hi, good afternoon or good morning, I'm Angela Buchanan of Nationwide. It's nice to see you all. Yes, that's correct. So under the 457B IRS rules, there is no penalty or age limit. So whenever a person terminates employment, whether it's on their own, retirement, or they're terminated, they have access to the account, no penalty, they simply pay taxes on it, based on how they withdraw.
So even if we mandate them to participate, whatever level we choose in the 401A, they do have the option to transfer that into the 457B? Can they, is that money like special money that they can now no longer remove?
So it depends. Once you've established the mandatory 401A, then whatever the rules are that you're going to say the required sick and vacation time goes in, if you do 100%, then none of that money would be, have the option to go into the 457. So today, an employee will leave, Todd mentioned this, and they kind of get cashed out based on your payout policy that's already been established in your benefits program, and they have an option either to take that and deposit it into their checking account, or they can roll it into their 457B to avoid the taxes, if there's room and they have not maxed out per the limits for that given year. If you do a flexibility where you fund the 401A, you say, okay, we're rolling and I give, for example, 50% of your vacation and sick time is mandated into the 401A, then the remainder 50% that they have, they could choose either cash out or roll into their 457B that exists today.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Marino, you're recognized.
Thank you. Todd, earlier you spoke of the employees that have been '94 or before, they are able to cash out 50%? I mean, they are able to transfer 50% of the 500 hours? Did I get that right?
No, I'm sorry. Employees that were hired before September of 1994 currently are eligible to be paid out up to 50% of their overall total of unused vacation leave up to 500 hours. I'm sorry, sick leave up to 500 hours. Employees hired after that time are eligible to cash out 10% of their overall accrual of sick leave up to 500 hours.
And do we know of the, those hired before September of '94, do we actually have a count of how many people that is?
317.
317 of 6,000 and change, okay, so 5%, so I also noticed that, you know, 56%, are contributing, but when you look at the 2,119 that are contributing, and it's only between 20 and 499, to me, this doesn't look like much of an investment policy. This looks more like a policy of how do we protect our sick days and our vacation days? Am I getting that wrong?
In terms of, are you talking about the participation in the 457B plan?
People that are contributing for additional investment.
Yeah, so the 457B plan is primarily a, a plan that employees contribute, you know, portion, not necessarily, not of their sick or vacation leave, but of their, you know, portion of their salary, of their pay that they make into that. So, you know, obviously, you know, we love to see more and more participation under the 457B. We, we do think that it's been very helpful to a lot of people that have ultimately retired from the county and supplemental income, and we continue to educate them more and more about, you know, the virtues of saving for their retirement. So, and we're going to continue to do that. We just think, we think that it's a good plan for them to have, and would like to see more people continue to, to support and invest and save.
Well, I know there's a lot of people that have a lot of vacation hours banked and sick time banked, and I understand the purpose of banking sick time in case there's some catastrophic event in your life. Vacation time, geez, people, take some vacation, we all need some rest. We need a break. We need a break every once in a while. I wish you would, you know, there's a young lady in my office who, please, take your vacation. But, what I'm, what I'm, I'm sort of, we have, this plan has two, really two components. One is the investment component that you contribute, and you can do it up to $66,000 a year, and the other is the cashing out of your, okay, you're shaking your head, please.
This plan that we're, that we're contemplating, Commissioner, is whether we use unused sick and vacation leave up to $66,000 in a one-time contribution at termination to be put into that 401A account. I mean, that's what the directive was, and that was the option that we've presented to you.
You know, that's the first time I actually heard that. So, what you're saying is, the $66,000 is the equivalent of what those sick and vacation hours would be?
Correct.
So, the...
At a maximum.
At a maximum. So, what you're saying is somebody walking out the door who's retiring can have a one lump sum payment of $66,000?
So, somebody walking out the door can have a lump sum payment, you know, that on the high end is, you know, roughly equal to 900 hours of sick and vacation leave, you know, on the high end, and could be low as several hours, you know, payout, depending on, or none, depending on whether they have that. The $66,000 is an IRS max that they cap, that you're eligible to be able to contribute in that. If somebody's walking out the door and has, you know, $100,000 in unused sick and vacation leave, they can still only put the max of $66,000 into it, and then the remaining balance would have to be dispersed, you know, through, through their check or, you know, through that means. But, $66,000 is a cap that's allowable under the IRS rules to contribute in the 401A, and what we've presented for you today is specifically to unused sick and vacation balances that somebody has at termination to be able to utilize.
And then when they retire or depart
Correct.
Here from the county, if there is, if there is an excess over the $66,000 and that gets into their last paycheck, they are actually paying taxes on that, and it's possible that it could bump them into another tax bracket.
True, possible.
Okay. All right. This is a lot to grasp, and I know we've gone over it, and every time we go over it, I learn more and more, and I know for our new commissioners, it's, it's a little confusing. For our old commissioners, it's still a little confusing. So, I have no more comments, and I'm welcome to hear anybody else's.
Mr., Mr., may I make a motion?
Okay.
For us to go out with an RFP and to do it with a single provider, and then for the, like, the, to leave us with the flexibility once with the provider for us to come back to us, for us to make that determination.
All right. So, we have a, we have a motion by Commissioner Bernard, issuance of an RFP. So, let me just make sure I get this right. So, we're, you are moving 1A on the inclusion of a 401A plan as part of the county's investment options for mandatory employee participation that directs designated unused sick and vacation leave into the special pay plan, and B, issuance of an RFP for one single provider. Okay? Clerk, we get that?
Yes.
Okay, good. All right. And we had, so we had a motion by Commissioner Bernard, a second by Commissioner Moreno. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, this motion carries seven to zero. So, we'll look forward to having further discussions about this now that we're just starting to get educated. Thank you.
Thank you for the direction. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Bonlaren. Moving on, 6A1, we are, let's see, I'm, we're going to recess as the Board of County Commissioners, so everybody put a new hat on. We're convening as the Environmental Control Board. And we are looking to, for, on item 6A1, to approve, reappoint three members of the Environmental Control Hearing Board. We have a motion by Commissioner Moreno, a second by Vice Mayor Sacks. Any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, all opposed, this motion carries seven to zero. Thank you. All right. We are adjourning as the Environmental Control Board. We're reconvening as the Board of County Commissioners. We are now on to item 7A1, and this is from the Office of Equal Opportunity, and this is a youth, appointing a youth representative to serve as the ex officio youth member to the Advisory Commission on Women for a term beginning on January 24, 2023 through September 30th, 2023. And we have three names in front of us. Somebody would like to make a motion?
Sure. I will follow the recommendation of the current commission and ask for the appointment of Sophia Neams.
Okay, so we have, now, do we, is this a nomination, or is this an, this is an appointment, so we would do it as a vote? Okay. So, we have a motion to appoint Sophia Neams by Commissioner Moreno, and we have a second by Commissioner Barnett. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, all in favor of appoint, of approving Sophia Neams as the youth, ex officio member of the, to the status of, what, Commission on Women Advisory Board. All those in favor, all those opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. All right. Moving on, Commission District Appointments. Do we have any appointments? And we will start, we will start with Commissioner Barnett. Do you have any appointments, sir?
I do not.
Thank you. Commissioner Woodward, do you have any appointments?
Not at this time.
Thank you. Commissioner Moreno, do you have any appointments?
Not at this time.
All right. Commissioner Bernard, do you have any appointments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to appoint Dara Cersey to the Education Facility Authority and Dell Blinton to the Library Advisory Board.
So, we have a motion by Commissioner Bernard and a second by the Vice Mayor. All in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Commissioner Baxter, do you have any appointments for us this morning?
I do. I would like to appoint Nicole Karaz, forgive me, Karazas to the Zoning Commission.
Okay, we have an appointment to the Zoning Commission by Commissioner Baxter and a second by, by, Vice Mayor Sacks. It's one on each side. If I say Maria, I'll get it right.
You got a 50% chance.
That's what I'm going to do, I just start going by, just Maria. Okay. All right. So, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to staff comments.
I have, I have an appointment.
Oh, I am so sorry, Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, do you have any appointments?
Yes, I do have an appointment. Shall I announce it at this time?
Go right ahead.
Thank you so much, thank you. I do. I have an appointment for Glenn Jurgensen to the Aviation and Airports Advisory Board. Glenn Jurgensen served as our administrator of the Tourist Development Council for many years, and I am honored to, to ask for his appointment and the support of the board.
Okay, and, and Maria, Commissioner Maria Moreno has seconded that, and so any further discussion on this? All in favor, all opposed, that motion also carries seven to zero, and my apologies for skipping you, and I have no appointments, that's... All right, moving on, Administration comments. County Administrator? No comments. County Attorney? No comments. All right, we have Commissioner District comments. So, I know Commissioner Baxter, you have a number of items that we're going to go over, so we'll go ahead, we'll just roll through the board, and we'll go through this way, and that way we can get to you and your, so we'll start with you, Commissioner Barnett.
Thank you, Mayor. Under my comments, I would like to request an offsite proclamation for the 90th anniversary of Palm Beach State College.
We have, and Commissioner Moreno has seconded that, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries seven to zero. Any further comments, sir?
No, thank you.
All right. Commissioner Woodward?
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to have a sad, happy announcement. We are losing a member of my staff, Yalen. Could you please stand up here? It's happy, sad, because she has been accepted to nursing school at Palm Beach State, so we'd like to congratulate her. Thank you. And although I've only had her for a short time, I've been here for two months, I'd like to thank her for all of her hard work and everything she's done for District Four. She's been pivotal in getting me on board and following me everywhere and getting me where I need to go, and thank you so much, and thank you for staying as long as you did with me. And I'd just like to congratulate her and her future. We do need nurses, and I'm sure she's going to make a fantastic nurse for us, and hope you stay in Palm Beach County. So, just congratulations and thank you, and congratulations for all of us, really. Thanks.
Thank you.
Commissioner Moreno?
Thank you. I do appreciate how much staff time goes in to all of the boards and councils that we name people to. And it really is a wonderful thing that we have the ability to place people in so many different areas in our county. And I think as, as a new commissioner, it took me over a year to place or replace people on those boards and councils, and I really tried very hard to match the abilities of the people that were going to that board or council with what the council was requiring, whether it was on the Airport Noise Board or the, you know, the Library Board, and I have a woman who was a doctor of library sciences on the Library Board. So, I do encourage our new district commissioners, don't rush the process, but take your, I mean, put people in there that you think will really contribute with a lot of, with experience, because it's important, and these, these boards and councils, whether it's planning and, or zoning, and there is a difference between planning and zoning, or, or the Library Facilities Board, it's really important. These people help guide us, and they also help contribute. So, you know, a lot of people say to us as, as county commissioners, how does the county bring in day-to-day people? And this is one of the ways we do that. So, I encourage you all to take your time and, and put people on there that you think will do the best job possible. And with that, I have no more comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. All right, Vice Mayor Sacks?
Thank you so much. Yes, I do. I'd like to request an offsite proclamation declaring March 10th, 2023, as the official FLOC Center for Counseling 50th Anniversary Day in Palm Beach County. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, and we have a motion by Vice Mayor Sacks, a second by Commissioner Moreno, all in favor, all opposed, that motion carries unanimously. Are there any further comments? Okay. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
No comments, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Baxter, I know you had, you had sent us a memo, you have five items on that memo, and I, I took the privilege of, on at least item number five?
I wanted it removed anyway, so I think we're probably on the same page there.
Okay, because I, I know that I talked to staff, and they're moving forward on replacing your carpeting with appropriate flooring, and I, my understanding is, it's well underway and, and that they've moved forward, the RFP has been issued, we're waiting, I think it'll be done very shortly.
The reason this is even on here is because I work daily with migraines, because I have allergies, and for me, migraines make a day, time periods, much longer, and so this was my, trying to maybe make it aware that this really is important to get done sooner than later, and I feel it...
And I think Commissioner, Vice Mayor Sacks had, had a similar issue, and unfortunately, I think it took a couple of months to get that swapped out, but I will say that my understanding is now, or not my understanding, they are going to be doing this throughout the entire floor, so...
But it is still my understanding that it is going to take over three months from now, and with daily migraines that you can imagine.
If I could, if I could, Mayor, if I may say something?
Yes, you're recognized, yes.
Okay. I am, that is terrible. Now, government moves slow, okay? All governments move slow. But if you would like, you can, and I only say this to nobody else, but you, welcome to move into my office, okay, for, because if it's easier for your health, then my, I have, you know, I have floors rather than carpet, and so, if I could, if she could, if the commissioner would like to come and check it out, if it's going to really take three months, then, Madam Administrator, what, what do you say?
I have been, and I truly understand the migraine headaches, and, you know, we attempt to address ADA issues as soon as possible, but we have procedures, unfortunately, we're government, and we're challenged on everything we do, and so we've got procedures that we need to necessarily follow. We immediately called the company that was selected to do the refurbishing of this building, renovation of this building. They gave us an estimate, the estimate was extremely high, so we're looking, now they've got a bid on the street, and so we should receive that final selection, that price, I want to say in a week or so, and then once we receive that, we'll order the product, we're doing it for the entire floor, because that is a part of re-renovating this building. And so, we're trying to get this as soon as possible, we know that we need to push it, we will. It will, we've been given a maximum of roughly about six weeks, it could be less, as we all know, we're all product-challenged, not just government, but all businesses. And so, after that, we anticipate it'll be roughly about eight weeks before we can complete the entire floor. We are going to start with Commissioner Baxter's office first, that side of the hall, and I've spoken with Commissioner Woodward, and so we'll wrap up with Commissioner Woodward's office. So, we're, we will push the consultant, I mean, our CM at risk contractor, as hard as possible on getting this done as soon as possible. If the Board has some other direction for me, we'll take that direction now.
Also, if I could, please, I have, you're more than welcome to use my office, and, and secondly, is there, do you have a northern office as well, that white?
I just have a western out in the Glades.
Does that, does that have appropriate flooring for you? No? It doesn't?
No.
Okay. So, absolutely, you're more than welcome if it's okay with the staff.
And I do appreciate that, I just don't see the scheduling of that, but...
No, but it does, it, it took, it takes time, because we have procedures to follow, but you also have a health issue? My office is open to you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Commissioner Bernard, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the, the issue regarding the carpet, it's been going on for so long, I think that staff needs to change the carpet, and I believe that we should give them a timeline to change the carpet, and my opinion is that it's, we should give staff within two weeks to change her carpet, and that's it. It's been, it's, it's been too long, she's got issues in terms of migraines, and they shouldn't take that long to change a carpet for her. So, my opinion is that we should give her, give administration less than two weeks to change the carpet.
I would appreciate that, I just don't know if that's possible.
They could do it overnight if they wanted to.
We hear you, and I think the quickest thing to do, if that's what we're going to do, would be to just replace the carpet with carpet, because it is going to take time for us to then come back and do the rest of the flooring for the rest of the building. So, that we cannot change. But carpeting, we could go out and just switch out carpet for carpet. What we were attempting to do was to make sure that we were as efficient as possible, keeping in mind the situation that we have with District Six. But if the Board is telling me to do it now, we'll do it now.
Yeah, I don't, I mean, without getting into the medical things and, and science and everything else, I think, I think, I think what you're hearing is the need to take, to do something quickly, I, I mean, is it possible to just remove the carpet and, and wait until new mater, until the materials get here so that at least she, the carpet's not in there anymore? I mean, it's, it would be a terrible thing to do, but, or you can just lay down linoleum or something.
Good morning. Yes, I'm Yalen, Director of Facilities Development and Operations. Few things that I would like to share with the Board, if I may. We do not do carpet replacement throughout entire areas with in-house staff, we do that through contractors. Our current process requires us to bid out those work orders, GMPs, amendments, whatever might be the extent of the work to be carried out. Exception to the bidding process will be an emergency determination as it relates to... As it relates to carpet issues, we handle tripping and safety concerns as emergencies, okay, but it still requires a contractor to come in. Facing off the work becomes also a situation, right? We need to ensure that services can continue to occur on the 12th floor, so typically we coordinate with the uses for them to do not report to the office. While we're performing work, given the operation that takes place on the 12th floor, we had scheduled for the upcoming flooring replacement to take place during nights and weekends, with some sections being done through accommodations during the week. So if the intent is to move forward with carpet replacement, we could then change direction. We have a flooring bid on the street right now through the CM, through the construction manager at risk. We can change that direction, do a carpet replacement, but we will still need to have the CM complete that process, and we do not have carpet on hand to do the replacement, the, the materials need to be ordered. So we can certainly expedite it, make this happen as soon as possible, but it's not going to happen overnight. We do need the ability to implement. Just removing the carpet without knowing what the condition of the sub, the surface is worries me at face value, because I cannot create a condition that then leads into tripping hazard, safety concerns, and so on and so forth. So I wouldn't be positioned to answer your question as to the possibility of removing and just leaving that surface as it is, because I don't know the condition of the surface, because the carpet is on top, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I know for me, I just, I just believe that you should work with the district commissioner to figure this thing out as soon as possible, and you gave us these procedures and all that kind of stuff. She's, she's asked to ask the carpet changed, and it's taking way too long for you to change the carpet. Work with the district commissioner and get it done in terms of changing her carpet to address this issue, period.
And I appreciate that. I mean, we've been, over two months now, that this has been a process that I've been trying to express, that I would like done sooner than later, and then it was taken into the only way we could replace yours in the district is if we replace everyone's. The only way you can get this is if we do everyone else's on any, anything, really. So I really appreciate that, Commissioner Bernard, I mean, any expedition would be greatly appreciated.
The floor is yours, Commissioner.
I, I mean, I would like to move to have this replaced within...
The other issues.
Oh.
Yeah, and here...
Do you need something for, as far as the carpet goes, or just direction?
I've got it.
Okay, good. Then the next one, so another issue, I was running into a timing for putting things into my office, and I guess they have vendor rules, that we have to use vendors, and I guess this has been a touchy subject, but when we are existing, as Ismei said, in a time of supply and demand issues, things are taking extended periods of time. So that was my idea to try to help us be able to get things was, and still have some accountability for higher purchasing things, was to set like a limit and say, if it's under this amount and you can't find it from a vendor, just give us some flexibility to be able to go outside of vendors. And so I'd love to hear what everyone has, or what they think about it.
So, would commit, I'm sorry, Vice Mayor?
Yes, hi. Hi, Commissioner Baxter. Welcome to government. I would recommend, I've been, since being a prosecutor with Janet Reno, where we had two pens and two number-two pencils, and that was it. And if you wanted anything more, it had to go in your pocket, and we were making 12,000 a year. So it is a, it is a system that works with checks and balances. So I would suggest, just suggestion, that maybe you could work with Ms., with Ms. Baker or with staff at Isme, with our purchasing group, and see how government works, because if I want to have a leather couch in my office, I can't ask the county to pay for it, you know?
I've run into an issue I'd like to let you know.
I know, I, I understand it, but in all due respect, we, government works with checks and balances, because it's not our money, and it's not, anybody hears, it's, it's taxpayers. So I would just suggest that in order for you to understand how to furnish your office, my office is furnished with my own, with my own money, right? Only because I know that it is the taxpayers' money if I ask them to pay for a new desk. So I would suggest, like many of you've gone out with our staff, looked at various areas, Ag Reserve and, and East, Eastern Shore, to go and, and sit down with our purchasing folks and see how it works, so that, that way you can understand exactly how the processes work. And, and again, my office is open, I got a lot of pens, I got a lot of pencils, whatever you need, I'm here to help you.
Commissioner, I appreciate...
But you've got to work with staff, because there's a process that we go through.
And I appreciate that, but I think you're jumping to some conclusions. So the issues I had run into was even, I use my own money to buy, like, I never want taxpayers to be burdened with my office supplies, but what this came down to is I purchased out of my own pocket an iPad. I didn't use office funds. And then I was told, because I didn't go through the county, that I couldn't use it for county business. So you can't have it both ways, and I'm well aware and have read and come very familiar with policies regarding purchasing and how it can be applied. But now I was stuck in a position where, okay, you're not allowed to buy it with your own money and use it for county stuff. Do you see where this becomes a problem?
There's a reason you don't want to use your personal IT for government business, and I'll tell you that later. I'd love to sit down with you, and, but I think that now's the time for staff to step in and maybe walk some of our new commissioners through the processes of, of government, you know?
I'm, I'm familiar, I'm just trying to make it easier for all of us. I'm well aware.
All right, let me, I mean, we're not going to get, I've asked that we finish at 11:30 for a recess for lunch in our picture, so we're going to go ahead and we'll move forward with that recess, and then we will come back at 1:30, and we'll continue, Commissioner comments.
Okay. Adjournments.